Agenda meeting and business meeting of the Board of Education pursuant to New Jersey statutes and rules adopted by the Board of Education. Notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger in Cable Vision of Elizabeth on February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. In addition, this notice is posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of five hundred North Bar Street. And pursuant to this act, a copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth, New Jersey. We want to welcome everybody present here today at School Fifty-One and to all our television and online viewers to this February twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, meeting of the Board of Education. We are here to govern, provide management oversight, and make policy for the district. The superintendent manages the district. This is a meeting of the Board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will be part of Elizabeth Education Permanent Record so that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings. Please refrain from talking while others are speaking. We are asked that you silence your electronic devices since it is illegally mandated that these proceedings be accurately recorded. We may ask for you to, for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. There will be a public portion for you to, for the public to personally adjust the Board. You may sign in prior to the start of the public participation portion so that you may have the opportunity to speak. The sign-in sheet states the name, address, and telephone number and the reason the person wants to comment, whether it is an agenda item or general education comment. We are pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us here at the Board of Education meeting. Thank you for your time, your interest, and your dedication to Elizabeth Public Schools. Ms. Candy, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Here.
Bathalas. Carvalho. Chavez.
Here.
Jacobs.
Here.
Marina Ortega.
Here.
Goncalves Pastana.
Here.
Rivera.
Naron.
Here. Please stand for a moment of silence for the following students that we have lost. At School One and School Nine, Matthew Navarro Villalobo, pre-K student at School Number One, and Thomas Webb, seventh grader at School Number Nine. Please keep the families in your hearts and your prayers. At this time, please remain standing for the presentation of colors by the Admiral William F. Halsey, Junior ROTC.
Hold on. Up and right. Can breathe. Hold it. Ready, right. Forward march. Hold it. March. Hold. Free and march.
At this time, Board Member Jerry Jacobs will please lead us in the Pledge of Ethics.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty that is for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. Please remain standing for the Star Spangled Banner.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Board Member Stephanie Pastana, please lead us in the Pledge of Ethics.
At the honor of Elizabeth Public Schools' professional and graduate area, I would treat people as elders to you here, the two of you who have hired a representative to understand what this school community is about.
It is a special place. It is a special place. Speaking of calm voices, you are proud to learn just appropriately for teaching and learning. Inspire, inspire myself and others by celebrating this in the United States. Care about demonstrating acts of kindness and be a lifeguard by taking out the opportunity to learn.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Hold on. Don't sit yet. Sorry. Forward march. Hold it. Hold on. Up. Order. Hold it. Ready, right. Forward march. Hold it.
Good evening. I would like to be able to share with our community some background with regard to our student representative for this evening from Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy. Marcita Bila is a dedicated senior at Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy who moved to the United States from Albania just two years ago. Despite the challenges of adjusting to a new country, she has excelled academically, taking AP US History, AP Statistics, and AP Literature this year. She is also deeply involved in the school community, serving as the Secretary of the Student Government and pursuing her passion for dance as an elective. Marcita has been accepted to all of the colleges she applied to, including Kane University, Montclair State University, Caldwell University, the College of New Jersey, Stockton University, Rutgers University, and Ramapo College of New Jersey. Her top three choices are Kane, Montclair, and Rutgers. Outside of school, Marcita balances work and family responsibilities, including serving as a translator for her mother and holding a job at the mall. Her dedication, leadership, and resilience make her a proud representative of Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy where she has found a strong sense of community and opportunity. It is my honor to be able to introduce Marcita Bila to our Board of Education. Yes, indeed.
Let's give Marcita Bila another big round of applause. To our newest student leader, welcome to the Board of Education. Good evening again, everyone. At this time, we want to enter in our public portion participation. Citizens may address the Board. Microphones are open for public comments to those who have signed in prior to this session. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total of time for public time is limited to sixty minutes. No individual is able to yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question Board members individually. Each speaker shall comply in all respects with Board Policy nine-three-two-two. Copies were provided next to the sign-in sheet. The following rules shall apply. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals or naming individuals, no vogo or indecent language. A person may address the Board no more than once during a single meeting, and comments will not be debated. Any person in violation of this policy will be warned and their comments may be terminated if needed. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the Board in public, not a meeting of the public. At this time, we have signed up Ms. Maria Madinos from Elizabeth, New Jersey. Good evening, Maria.
Good evening. Um, I have a couple of issues. I have a parent that she's here. She had spoken about for her child, okay, that has special needs, and she reached out to Olga. Nobody reached back to her. This has been since October, and that's a shame. The second thing is, the other day, I had business to do in the school. The only words I used in there was "kick rocks" when I was talking to my mechanic, and I told, I was told to watch my language. I asked the security guard, "Why?" I only said "kick rocks," and he threw me out of the school for filthy language. I know I have a filthy mouth, but I would never use it in a school with children, okay? His name is James Lewis. You cannot stop me from my First Amendment. I have the right to say what I want. It's a freedom of speech. So your rules does not apply to anyone, okay? So stop with this nonsense saying that you cannot speak about anyone. It's freedom of speech. So if you just want to turn on my mic, try, because I promise you, I lost my husband, I'm not that calm person no more, I'm an angry white woman. I'm very angry. Now, I have another child that he gets bullied in School Nine. They choked him the other day. Why does a principal say that you have to make an appointment when the child is being beat up and harassed constantly? There's a limit to this. We're parents. There's a lot of parents that have the right to go in and speak to the principal. Since when have yous put barriers against that? Yous want parents to work with the school. When will the school start working with these parents? Transparency. There's a lot of things that yous don't know what's going on. Yous, as Board members, need to go check out these schools. In front of yous, they paint a pretty picture, but to these parents, they feel discriminated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Madinos. Maderos, I'm sorry. That concludes our public portion for this evening. Nobody else has signed on. However, there is a parent that you said is here, Ms. Maria. Where's the parent? Is the pa- excuse me? The parent is here, right? Okay. Assistant Superintendent Sedaniel, can you please see them about the two issues that were presented? I think there's the bullying, and then there's the special needs parent, with the special needs issue. Thank you. All right. Again, that concludes our public portion of this meeting. At this time, we'd like to spotlight our Board of Education Board members who have sponsored this month as we celebrate Black Excellence this month. The members, Board Members Charlene Bathalas and Commissioner, Commissioner Charlene Bathalas and Commissioner Jerry Jacob have been celebrating Black Excellence this month throughout the month of February. The Elizabeth Public Schools have been promoting the significant contributions of Black Americans here in Elizabeth and the communities across the United States. Students have been engaged through lessons, activities, events, performances that have helped them to better understand and learn more about Black Excellence. The full video of this initiative will be posted on our website at the end of the month. Please focus your attention on the screen as we just present to you just a quick snippet of some of the highlights that you will witness throughout the month.
Hi. I am Elizabeth Board of Education Member Charlene Bathalas.
And I'm Elizabeth Board of Education Member Jerry Jacobs.
During the month of February.
Under the leadership of President Stanley Naron.
It is our honor to sponsor and support Black History activities and events throughout our schools in Elizabeth that celebrate Black Excellence.
From the arts and the sciences to business and politics, African-Americans continue to make groundbreaking contributions. We see it on a national and global scale in the artistry of Kendrick Lamar, the scientific genius of Dr. Kizmekah S. Corbett, and the political leadership of Hakeem Jeffries. We even see it right there in our own neighborhoods through the entrepreneurship of Karen Civil, the athleticism of PJ Walker, and the continued community leadership of Councilwoman-at-Large Patricia Perkins Augustin.
Black excellence is more than a recognition of past achievements that have changed the course of history and advanced our society. It is about honoring, upholding, and setting a new standard of greatness. It is a unique group of inspiring examples for our students to be motivated by and to pursue. Black history is American history.
Thank you, Board Commissioners, for the amazing job this month as you go throughout these schools and you visit and you read stories to children. And to all the schools celebrating Black History and doing the special events and programs throughout the school, we want to thank you for following through with these initiatives and making sure that we have a vibrant, diverse community here in our, in the city of Elizabeth. And I also want to thank Director Samuel E. Chin for his work in helping to put together our Black History Month program. That was phenomenal. We attended that last Thursday, so let's give him a big round of applause for the efforts he put together. Thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to present to you our Superintendent Schools, who will be sharing with you the community updates.
Thank you, President Naron. Wonderful. Oh, thank you. So we begin with our Early Childhood Lottery Registration. A reminder to our families that the Early Childhood Registration started yesterday, February nineteenth, and will run through March twenty-first. This is all for all incoming three-year-olds who are residents of Elizabeth. The registration will be in person by appointment only, beginning, as I stated yesterday, and running through March thirty-first, twenty-first. Appointments will be available by visiting the links epsnj.org/ecregistration. And any three-year-old who registers between February nineteenth and March nineteenth has the same probability of being randomly selected for a lottery school. Some of our families believe if they're the first registrants, that's the only opportunity to be accepted into a lottery school, and that's not the case. All students currently in the three-year-old program will be automatically placed in the four-year-old program. So our Early Childhood Department sent out a brochure to all of our households as reminders with the various dates and the registration process. So I encourage all of our members of our community to please sign on for your appointment. Our next slide, please. This is a very busy month. We have also our Gifted and Talented Program Application. Session has been scheduled for our families of our prospective students for Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, at William Halloran School Number Twenty-Two, and that's located at six-twelve Pulaski Street. And our students in grades two to four are eligible to participate in the application process. They may do so by visiting our district webpage and be able to access the information regarding the orientation that will be held on Tuesday. The admission process includes an entrance examination for our students that are in grades two, three, and four, and the window once again is open between February twenty-fifth and April fourth. And next slide, please. And also, this month, we are launching our Panorama Family Survey. So the Elizabeth Public Schools, through its partnership with Panorama, is offering family feedback and climate surveys to capture the voice of all of our families, which helps guide our strategic improvement, our decision-making at both the school level and also at the district level. We review this data very carefully at our meetings, and we incorporate those recommendations into our following school year at the various departments. The survey is less than five minutes long and available in multiple languages, and we, of course, a reminder to our families, this survey has been communicated not only through email but also via text, and there will be multiple reminders that will be sent out. Again, it's opened on third, it opened on the eighteenth and will run through April And next very, uh, next slide, please. Thank you. So over the next few months, the Elizabeth Public Schools and the Department of Student Services will be hosting scholarships and FAFSA completion nights. School counselors will be available to assist our students to complete the FAFSA and the application for the upcoming scholarships, as well as showing students where they may find additional scholarship opportunities. For those who plan to attend to fill out the applications for scholarships, please create a Going Merry account prior to attending, and that website is, has been provided. Those attending to complete FAFSA forms should create a Federal Student Aid or FSA ID, I'm very familiar with this now as the mother of a senior, prior to attending and must bring a laptop and their tax documents. So a reminder to all of our families with regard to the various dates that have been posted, and you can see on the slide before you, February twenty-sixth, March sixth, March twenty-fifth, April sixteenth, April thirtieth, and May fourteenth. I certainly encourage our families to avail themselves of these opportunities, and special thanks to our counselors, to our Director Anthony DiDonato for coordinating these opportunities for our families. And next, our High School Selection Information Sessions for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Our eighth-grade students will have the opportunity to review the various options in our eight high school academies and be able to attend orientation sessions and ultimately make the choice for their next four years. So we have the brochure that is being finalized and will be sent out by the end of next week on February twenty-eighth to all of our families. And next slide, please. So next, we have an update regarding student assessments. Next slide, please. So the Alternate Access for Ls is an assessment that is administered to our multilingual learners to determine the level of English language proficiency. This is a paper-based, individually-administered assessment to all of our students in K-12 who are identified as multilingual learners with the most significant cognitive disabilities. And typically, it is double-coded for our multilingual learners and also for our special education students who take the assessment referred to as the DLM. So we have the information before you with regard to the results of the assessment for the preceding school year, and in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, eighty-five students were assessed with the Alternate Access for Ls. And as you can see on the slide before you, there are various categories, correct? There's assessment of listening, of speaking, of reading, of writing, and then you have your overall score, aside from those individual scores. So we're sharing with our community the performance of the eighty-five students as it relates to the proficiency at the various levels. So it's proficiency is defined as initiating, exploring, developing, expanding, and bridging. And as you can see, the strength for our students is most certainly at the initiating, at the fifty-two percent level for speaking, correct? And then in terms of proficiency, when we look at bridging, we have twenty-two point four percent for, for listening, as well as we have twelve point nine percent for reading at the developing level. And those are just the individual averages that we are sharing with our community, and then you're able to, for families of the eighty-five students, you are receiving in the mail the individual scores for your children. Next slide, please. And then, very important, to be able to share with our community, our Spring Assessment Calendar. We have the Access for Ls and our Alternate Access for Ls, as I just previously presented, and that is running the entire month of February through March thirty-first for all of our multilingual learners. We have the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, which will run from March eleventh through March fourteenth, and that is for our eleventh-grade students and our seniors who have not yet taken the assessment for graduation. We also have the SAT that will be offered on April twenty-ninth for our eleventh-grade students and twelfth-grade students who have not yet taken the assessment, and that is a graduation requirement, a reminder to all of our students. And then we have the DLM, the Dynamic Learning Maps, that will be administered between the dates of April eighth and May twenty-eighth, and that is for our high school, sorry, that's for our students in grades three to eight and also eleven in place of the NJSLA. We then have our Advanced Placement Assessments that will be administered between May fifth and the sixteenth, and that is for our high school students enrolled in AP courses. And lastly, we have the NJSLA, the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment for English Language Arts, for Mathematics, and for Science, and that administration will be between May sixth and May twenty-third, and that is for our students in grades three to eight and our high school students. And that completes our assessment calendar. This information will be posted on our website. We will ensure that reminders are sent out. Our principals always send letters to the families and reminders, and we certainly will leverage email and text messages as well. And that completes our, oh, no, I'm sorry, that does not complete ours. Next slide, please. Fantastic. So we have three schools that were named New Jersey Schools of Characters. We want to be able to celebrate our School Number Twenty-One, our School Number Twenty-Two, and School Number Twenty-Eight that were chosen for this school year. It's, it's a very labor-intensive application process, so we certainly are happy to receive this notification, and there will also be an opportunity to recognize our schools at a regional event. Next slide, please. We have three students, this is actually news that we just received yesterday afternoon, three students that were selected for the Youth Art Month State Exhibit. Three students from two district schools who entered the Union County Art Education of New Jersey Youth Art Month were selected to represent Union County at the state exhibit, and that will be held at the Grounds for Sculpture in Hamilton, New Jersey. So great opportunity, and this will take place on March twenty-ninth. Additionally, students have been invited to showcase their work at the Liberty Hall Museum at the Union County Youth Art Month Exhibit, and that will be on display from February twenty-fifth to March nineteenth. So wonderful opportunity, and a congratulations to our students from School Four, Danielle Sancho, School Number Four, Emmaia Shaquille, also from School Four, and Erica Ramon from School Number Thirty. Congratulations to our very talented students. Next slide, please. And we have our calendar of events that is coming up. We launch on March third with the Read Across America Day, which is always such a wonderful opportunity where I, I think that's the day that Central Office is virtually empty because everyone is out in the schools reading to children, which is just a wonderful opportunity to engage with all of our children at the schools. We also have the National School Social Worker Week, that is March second through the eighth. We have our National School Breakfast Week, March third through the seventh, March seventeenth, St. Patrick's Day. We have our American Red Cross Month, which is the entire month. We have our Irish American Heritage Month as well, Music in Our Schools Month, National Nutrition Month, our Gifted and Talented Students Month, our Women's History Month, our Social Workers Month, and our Youth Youth Art Month. So the month of March is certainly going to be quite exciting across all of our schools in the district, and this concludes our announcements for this month. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you Superintendent Hugo Meyer. At this time, we'll now review the agenda. We want to start with Tab 1A, Official and Private Minutes of January 7th and January 14th. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, hearing none, Mr. Kennedy, please add that to the agenda. Tab 1B, Treasurer and Secretary's Report of December 31st, 2024. Are there any comments or concerns or questions in regards to Tab 1B? Mr. Kennedy, please add Tab 1B to the agenda. Tab 2A, Personnel Reports. Are there any questions from the board?
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Yes, Madam Vice President.
Uh, question. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven resignations on teachers. And are those, I apologize. Can we have, Mr. Quester, can you, are we replacing all of them? And when will they start?
Hello? Yes, that will be replaced. Are they starting time, I'm not sure at this time. It depends on the subject matter. We are hiring quite a few teachers, but not even one recently resigned is going to be replaced immediately.
So for clarification, they're not replaced in this agenda?
No, I understand.
Say that again?
For clarification, they have not been replaced on this agenda.
I believe they have, I don't believe they have, no.
No, I was trying to match them, but I couldn't.
Any other comments or concerns, Commissioner Bathles?
Yes, thank you. I know in the past, we had talked, maybe in the recent months, that we had discussed hiring only essential teachers for math, autism, special education, science. I noticed there were some other teachers that were not part of the, the group that we had discussed. Is there a reason for that? Are we just hiring all teachers? It doesn't matter what background they have?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, repeat that? I didn't quite hear what you said.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now, yes.
Okay, thank you. I know in the past few weeks or months that we had discussed that we were only going to hire essential teachers for mathematics, autism, special education, science, and whatever, like, you know, maybe teachers who have special language backgrounds. And I noticed there was certain teachers being hired this month that didn't have that background. They were just a regular teacher. Is there something changed?
Uh, not to my knowledge. I believe that anytime we have an opening and if there's a qualified teacher, we hire the person. The areas that you mentioned are the areas where we usually have the most openings. But to my knowledge, there are no restrictions in recommending the employment of a teacher in any other area.
Okay. That was a conversation I recalled. But back to Maria's question, so the people who retired, they were not replaced in this agenda?
Retired or resigned?
Or resigned, yeah.
All of them, to my knowledge, no.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Superintendent, you had a question, you had a comment?
Uh, I was just going to ask for a point of clarification, because at first, Ms. Bathles, I thought you were referring to the incentive for the $5,000.
Correct.
Which does cover the categories that you mentioned with regard to English Language Arts, the Mathematic, the Science, the Special Education, and the bilingual, of course. So those are still being prioritized with the incentive? So I interpreted your question as referring to that, if I'm correct?
Correct, that was the conversation I was referring to. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, absolutely. Those incentives continue to be applied, we're still recruiting for those positions, they continue to be critical positions that need to be filled. Absolutely. You're, you're welcome.
Mr. President, I have another question.
Yes.
I noticed that there was 17 moves under the custodians. Is there a reason why we're moving so many custodians all around the district? I can't hear you.
And why the custodians have been transferred, another question?
Yeah, like, there, there's, it's so many moves, 17 moves around the district.
Well, those, those moves are recommended by, by plan and property. And sometimes there are legal reasons, sometimes there are recommendations from head custodians, and, and those transfer, transfers are analyzed by plan and property and recommended to my office.
Plan and property, you recommended all those 17 moves? Okay, we could talk later. Thank you. And then I also, one more question, Mr. President. I noticed under, on page 22, that there was someone moving to custodian, was that supposed to go under the custodian tab and not food services? Was that an error?
Uh, you said page 22?
Correct. Under food services?
Oh, from locker room attendant?
Yeah, was that supposed to be under tab, was that supposed to go under page?
Yeah, that looks like it's miscategorized.
Yeah.
Mr. Kennedy? You see the tab?
I do.
On page 22, we have a locker room attendant going to custodian, so.
Yeah, that should probably not be under the food service category, we'll put it under the right category.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bathles. Mr. Kennedy, please add Tab 2A to the agenda with that adjustment on page 22. Thank you. Tuitions reports, are there any questions from the board from Tab 3? Seeing none, hearing none, Mr. Kennedy, please add Tab 3 to the agenda.
Mr. President, quick question.
Yes.
On the tuitions report, is there a particular time of the year that we, that these, that we make the payments to the added district, or it just depends when they begin at the added district schooling? Because I noticed, like, now this one's a heavier, a heavier month, February. Is there a particular timeframe when we make the payments?
Well, these are the tuition amounts for the period, for each of those students there. Then, we pay tuition based on their monthly attendance, so they bill us each month for the monthly component of that full tuition.
But there's certain students that are yearly, right? Or it's, there're students that are monthly?
No, these amounts would be the, would be the yearly amount or prorated, prorated for the time period. And then they take the number of months that that tuition covers and bill us monthly for that total.
Monthly, I understand, okay. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
You're welcome.
Are there any further questions for Tab 3? Seeing none, hearing none, Tab 4 to 4C, Superintendent's Report. Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. President, you say 4C?
Commissioner Marina?
Are you speaking about 4C, yes?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I have, I don't have a question, I have a comment. I, I want to say thank you to the principals and also teachers. We see on the agenda 155 Filtrates. That's been a happy because it's experience for our students. And it's extremely, I was one of the board members who asked for Filtry, different kind of Filtry in different school, and I see a big, big change. I want to say thank you, I really appreciate every principal, every teacher who dedicated time to go on this kind of, this Filtry, and also our directors and assistant superintendent. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns, Tab 4 to 4C? Seeing none, hearing none, Mr. Kennedy, please add that to the agenda, please. Authorizations Report, Tab 5.
Yes, Mr. President?
Commissioner Bathles?
I just have a question for, on page 2, the authorization to accept, did we send a thank you letter to this company or foundation? I don't know, that's a general question?
Every month, yes, we have letters that go out for all donations, thanking the organization for their contribution.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Just wanted to bring acknowledgement to the fact that we're getting some donations to our collision repair program at Edison Academy. So just wanted to thank them.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments? Please add Tab 5 to the agenda. Tab 6, 6A, Finance and Accounting Reports. Any comments or concerns? Seeing none, hearing none, please.
I have a question, I'm sorry.
You have a question? Commissioner Bathles?
So for the, for the item number three, did we pay?
What page?
On, item number three on page one.
Okay.
Uh, did we pay this individual? Did he, did this person pay out of pocket and then we're just reimbursing them that amount?
No, he gets, he comes up and gets a check before the trip, before the trip, it is made out to him. And then he disperses it, and then when he comes back, he brings all the receipts and counts payable, and the coach makes sure that anything that, they reconcile, and anything that isn't paid, he gives back.
Do we do that for all coaches?
For all, yes, for, for all the athletic trips out of, out of town.
Okay, so what's the difference between the number in the first, oh, total, duh, okay, nevermind, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Vice President?
Uh, page 2, number 28, Open Systems.
Yes.
Um, I asked that the perimeter security enhancements are broken down in the agenda and not just stated as various schools, so we know where we're spending the money?
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, absolutely, we have the purchase order that breaks it out better than that, so we can show what dollar went to each school.
Thank you. That was separate bids, if I'm not mistaken? That, so it should, it should be on the agenda separately.
So, Mr. Kennedy, just to clarify, would that mean that it would be on a different line? So it'd be on an additional line, like 28, 29, 30?
No, it should all be under Open Systems, but we can break out for the.
So you'll break it down in that, in that box?
Each of those three payments, what it might have been, just for the sake of argument, this 65, 501 might have been three different locations, so we would show the amounts that add up to that 65,000.
Understood.
May I ask if the vape monitors were installed in all the high schools? And is it complete? Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Bathles?
I'm adding to Maria's request for number 26, the installation of the security vestibles, can you do the same thing with that where it says various schools? So I guess whenever it says various schools, if you can just break it down so we can see that, please?
Sure, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
And 43, and where else, wherever else that we're, we're not mentioning right now.
So in all areas where it says various schools, we'd like a, a detailed breakdown?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Thank you, Commissioners. Any other questions or concerns? Please add Tab 6A, 6, Tab 6 and 6A Finance and Accounting Report to the agenda. Award of Contracts, Tab 7, any questions or concerns?
Mr. President, I'm going to carry you back just a little bit, I think there might have been a typo on, again, Tab 6, page 3, number 44. Shouldn't that be under the Tuitions Report?
I'm sorry, it's Tab 6, page 3, number 44.
No, the Tuitions Report is the contract for, for the tuition. This is a listing of a hand check that went to pay that tuition. So one is the contract for the tuition, that's over in the Tuitions Report. This is a summary of.
The checks written?
A check that was done by hand.
Okay.
So all these are hand checks?
No, the ones with the stars.
With the stars, okay. But these are all the payments that's issued to the vendor?
And then the, just, just to, as a reminder, the ones that aren't starred are also, they also appear further on in the claims list. So you'll see, for instance, under Open Systems, you'll see the details of all those checks that are on the claims list that add up to that amount.
Award of Contracts, any questions or concerns, Tab 7?
Oh, yeah. Mr. President?
Yes, Madam Vice President?
Uh, page 3, Contract with, for the Mechanical Contractors for Food Service. I know we have no one here, but I'd like to ask if that went out to bid.
Mr. Kennedy?
Which payers are we talking, I'm sorry?
Page 3, Contract for Food Services?
Mechanical Contractors.
Which one is that?
That's the last one?
Oh, got it.
It says that he was the sole bidder, does that mean?
He automatically gets.
It's just a fairly large contract to only have one bid and to just give it to someone?
Yeah, it went out to bid and there was just one bidder.
Yeah. If it was one bidder, that's why.
Can we check if we've been using any other company to do minor repairs under the bid?
I'm not quite following that question. Are we, who do we use for minor?
Are we currently using this company to, to repair, to do the repairs?
Yeah, I can check that, that's easy.
I, I'm not going to hold it up, but I just want to know if we're using, if we're using this company now, and that may be the reason why we're just rolling this over and they bid. And then my other question is going to be, have we used another company that's, was under the bid process to repair? Thank you.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Bathles?
On page 7, the last item on there, which is for Mr. Marcel, he's not here. All right, well, I just wanted to know what kind of security they were trying to get from this company from Arizona? And if I can get an example of what the security was, or you know?
Yes, it's a security-based platform that we are in partnership with the Elizabeth Police.
Oh. It don't say right here.
No, Fuchsia's, yes, we've entered into that partnership, I believe it's two years.
Yeah, it doesn't say Elizabeth Police on here.
Oh, I know that.
So I didn't know that.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
So are you referring to the camera system that integrates?
Yes, yes, we link up, our cameras will link up with the police, especially in the case of an emergency. And on an emergency response, the officers can pull up the actual school, the mapping of their exact location where they're going on their phones.
So this is for the, the tech software that we?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. Yeah, it doesn't, we wouldn't know that by reading it, so.
Okay.
I know what you're, I'm very familiar with what you're talking about, but just by reading it, we wouldn't know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, appreciate it. Commissioners, any other comments or concerns?
Yes.
For?
Yeah, Mr. President? Same page, thank you. The question is for Dr. Daphne, thank you. I see two contracts, one we write in revolutions for ELA teachers and the, for K to 12, and the other one is from ELA teacher from K to fifth. What new do you see in these two companies? Do you recommend these two, why they offer something new to improve the ELA or what different, based on your opinion, when you request these two contracts will be benefits our teachers?
So the one, uh, good evening, the one with CLI, Children's Literacy Initiative, it's a partner that we currently have, so it's an expansion on what we're currently doing with our staff. But with Children's Literacy Initiative, our initial focus was reading, we're expanding or enhancing our curriculum as far as writing. So we're partnering with them to assist with our writing curriculum as well as our curriculum for the summer promotion retention program. And then with the Writing Revolution, because we are expanding or trying to enhance our strategies for writing, we partnered with the Writing Revolution. our, uh, strategies for writing, we partnered with the writing revolution, and we conducted research on several different consultants to see which one would best enhance what we currently have, and just, uh, provide the, the needs that we need for our students in writing.
Thank you for your details, explanation.
You're welcome.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Baffalas?
Yes, on page eight and page nine, this is for, um, Dr. Dorothy McMullen, I noticed that, um, there's five, uh, contracts or requests, award or request for the, um, indoor percussion ensemble. Is there a reason why we're doing individual contracts there and not putting it through tab two, are there outside consultants or outside people and not people who work for us? I don't remember, I don't recall any of these names.
So, um, we actually, uh, do go for internal people, and we also, and if we can't hire people from the inside, we then go for contracted people.
No one wanted to do this?
Not from internally, so we have hired for, um, external people.
Really? That's interesting, even the color guard?
Yes.
The person we had before, not here? Oh, okay. Oh, that's interesting, okay. And then, also another question for you on page nine, the third one down, I noticed that we're doing unlimited online audiobook, which is great, um, how long, how many years have we had this prior?
So we have actually had this prior to COVID. We, we have been, um, utilizing Learning Ally, um, for our students prior to COVID, for students that have had, um, difficulties with reading, and we implement it through our teacher tutors and through INRS for our, our students that have reading difficulties.
Great, and it's doing well? It's doing well?
Yes, yes.
Awesome, I'm glad that they extended the, the contract until the end of the year, for free, I was looking at the number, I was like, how much?
Yep.
Okay, then I have one more question, Mr. President, and then I'm done for the page. Uh, on page thirteen, one, two, three, down, for the safety or the Safe Driving Club with the Rose Safety Foundation Teens Kids News, are we gonna offer that to all the high schools, or is that just for Thomas Jefferson, Thomas Edison?
I can certainly take that question, so that was an application, um, our supervisor of physical education and health, Joe Prisatula, made the application available to all of our high schools, um, Edison applied, um, and they were selected for this opportunity. The intent is to be able to expose all of the high schools, um, in the future, but right now, um, Edison was selected for, uh, this opportunity.
Excellent, I would like to hear their review and, uh-
Oh, be happy to share, absolutely.
Thank you so much, thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Yes, Madam Vice President?
I have a question for Mr. Malanas from Plant Service, Plant and Property, I don't even know his name. Page nine, uh, the contract with LAN, uh, can you explain a little bit about that project, Mr. Malanas?
Can you repeat that again, please?
Uh, page nine?
Okay.
Contract with LAN Associates, it is the new process technology classroom at Thomas A. Edison.
Yeah, they're, they're designing a, um, the process technology, uh, classroom, uh, it's, it's called In, I can't remember the name, In Night, so they're, they are in the process of redesigning that, so they, they have to, uh, we have to create a drawing so that we can add the electricity and the plumbing that is necessary to run some of those, uh, those tables that they have for, you know, experimenting and, and things like that, so we hired LAN Associates to do that, and they also have to pull a, uh, actually an application to DOE, because the classroom that we are, that we chose, we are changing the configuration of it, so we need to, uh, do a change of gears.
So this is the first phase to send to the DOE?
That's the first phase.
To come back, then to the concept, so then to come back?
They're still, they're in the process of designing, no matter what, so, you know, once, once they have the, uh, the actual document from DOE, then we can go ahead and do construction, we can obtain a, a permit and then go on construction.
Thank you, I'm very excited, and thank you for all the work that you're doing at Edison, um, everyone's really happy over there. Have one more question, if you could go to page ten, it says renew contract, um, was that because it expired? I see that they were the sole bidders?
Yes, they, they actually do the sourcing of energy for us, uh, regrettably, we're not, uh, experts in the, in the market, you know, so we don't know how the, uh, you know, the, the electricity or the gas is going to be from year to year, so they, we use these people to do that, they also, uh, check our bills to make sure that there are no discrepancies, and if they find one, you know, then we go, they go, uh, you know, through the, uh, utilities and get our money back, so-
And this is the second time?
No, this is actually, they've been with us since twenty-eight, twenty-eighteen.
Twenty-eighteen?
Yep.
And we have records of what we've saved by using this company?
Yes, we can, you know, we can produce, uh, you know, that, they also do, um, something called demand response, which, uh, what happens is during the year, the utilities, uh, put a bulletin out there asking us to, uh, drop the power in our buildings, so what we do is we shut off all our, uh, ventilation systems for an hour, and then, once that, that happens, uh, and the power is restored, then we get actually refunded, so sometimes we get in checks, you know, forty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars, eighteen thousand dollars, it'll all vary.
That's exciting news, twenty-eighteen. Caught my eye, thank you, I'm, I'm very interested in, in keeping up with that, and if you could provide us with some sort of data, I think we would all appreciate seeing that.
Sure.
Especially with superintendent's cutting.
Thank you, Mr. Malanas.
Speaking of budgeting, they also tell us what numbers to put in the budget for energy, energy also.
That's really, thank you, thank you.
I'm gonna wanna take us back to, um, the, uh, school trips that we were talking about, so, um, Assistant Superintendent Cortez, can you tell us the number of school trips that we've had, uh, thus far for, um, the year? Please turn this mic on.
So, uh, as of today, we have approved seven hundred and fifty field trips for the year, beginning in July.
Awesome, thank you, that's a huge accomplishment, thank you for that great work, just give them another big round of applause. Mr. Candy, please add tab seven.
Mr. President, I have last question, I'm sorry.
This is for the tab?
Seven.
You have a question for tab seven?
Yes.
Okay, tab seven, commissioners?
Yes, last question, page eleven for Dr. Sandra Nunez, in this, um, this program is to student, bilingual student?
Alexia?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, good evening, everybody.
Can you explain a little bit more about, is across curriculum, because we'll be supporting math, uh, everything, or how is, sounds interesting, but I want to know a little bit more?
Yeah, we started using it over the summer, and we continued, um, and what we really liked about the, it's an online platform, and it's to help with listening and speaking, and so students go on and they can practice, and what we noticed with our access scores, speaking was one of the domains where we needed to work a little bit more, and giving them more opportunities to practice speaking English, so it records them, and they use it, and it's, it exposes them to different content areas, so the teachers really, really like it, um, and the students as well, so, so far, so good.
Thank you, thank you so much, no more question, Mr. President.
Mr. President, one question, uh, page two.
There's more questions, Commissioner?
Uh, page two, this is for the Director of Student Services, um, Anthony, quick question, this prevention and mitigation of common infectious illnesses, who's going to serve, this webinar will serve for our nurses?
This is, this, oh, good evening, everyone, this is for all of our nurses for our March third half-day PD, so they're gonna be having a live webinar, all the nurses will participate, learn about common illnesses that affect the schools.
In the schools, beautiful, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think all directors have gotten a turn.
You were in the right color, so you're good. All right.
I'd like, I'd like another turn. So McCloskey, that, um, Commissioner Carvalho was asking about, we, we've contracted with them back as far as two thousand nineteen, twenty, each year was a result of a bid, and, um, up until last year, twenty-four, twenty-five, there was more than one bidder, twenty-four, twenty-five, they were the sole bidder, and they, obviously, they won, and then this new bid for twenty-five, twenty-six, they were the only bidders again, but prior to twenty-four, twenty-five, there were more than one bidder.
Thank you, Mr. Candy, for clarifying that.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Candy, Commissioner Jacobs?
Thank you, so, again, on the comment for Commissioner Carvalho, uh, in reference to New Energy, I'm wondering if we can get an analysis, since they've been on contract since two thousand nineteen, twenty, to see the yearly trend as reference for the property committee for us to review? Absolutely, we received a request, and I gave it to Mr. Malanas, and he told me we would be able to give you that information. Thank you, Mr. Candy, uh, Mr. President, I have another question as well?
Sure, Commissioner.
Uh, tab seven, page, page seven, um, no, I'm sorry, that question was answered. Page, tab seven, page four, uh, contract for Code Monkey Studios, um, what is that contract for? Director ETN?
Uh, page four, tab?
Tab seven, page four?
With Code Monkey Studios?
Code, yes. Code Monkey?
Yes.
So Code Monkey is a program that we utilize in all of our, um, elementary K to eight, uh, computer classes, it's a program that provide kids learning how to code, so this year, we have it for half the year from, um, the month of, um, February all the way up to June, so it's a program that helps kids with learning, um, coding with blocks, and it helped them, as they move to a high school, to start learning other engineering programming, so it's a, it's a well worth program, kids are engaged in that process, and our teachers enjoy it.
Thank you, that's, well, as we know, that's most important, especially when we'll make sure that our students are ready for the twenty-first century, thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Pistana?
Thank you, President, you're on, um, this, it's just a simple question for, um, Director Malanas, with page nine, contract with Fresh and Clean Custom Painting LLC, um, is this something that will be done during the summer, or during like spring break?
During spring break.
Okay. And I just, you're good, you want me to ask? You want me to ask? You want me to ask? Okay, um, can you tell us, when was the school twenty-one last renovated?
When it was built.
Built, how many, how long?
It's been a while.
Yeah, that's, it's been a while.
You're speaking on school twenty-one?
Yes, sir.
So you're not saying when it was built, you're saying when it was renovated, that was the, the last major renovation?
That was the last major renovation that we done, so that we, you know, we haven't done much else to, you know, to the building.
And that was, what, two thousand four, two thousand five?
No, that was, uh, twenty-twelve.
Twenty-twelve.
Twenty-twelve, yeah.
Thirteen years?
This is school twenty-one?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Commissioners? Commissioner Chavez, any questions? No? Okay, Commissioner Billah, do you have a question? She don't have a question. All right, so we're gonna add to, tab seven can finally be added on the agenda, okay. Now we're very excited to hear from Marissa Billah, student representative, and we're gonna hear her report, let's give her a big round of applause.
Good evening, Dr. Hugo Meyer, members of the Board of Education and community members. My name is Marcida Billah, and I'm honored to serve as a student representative for Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five academic year. I moved to the United States just two years ago from a small country in Europe called Albania. Struggling with English as my second language and grieving the loss of a parent, I was able to start school and continue my education at Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy during my sophomore year. All of my classes were in English, but through Thomas Jefferson, I was able to practice my English, speak it fluently, and achieve great academic success. Now I am proud to be in the top eight percent attending students of my class, taking AP and honor courses since my junior year. As the student government secretary, I help organize various events to make school activities fun for everyone. We begin the school year with our back-to-school night, where parents were welcome to learn about everything our school offers. They had the chance to take a tour, walk around the building, and meet the teachers. Next, we had our fall play, Peter Pan, where our talented cast brought the story to life with their amazing performances, which the audience loved so much. Our Halloween metal concert in October and unplugged show two weeks ago showcased the talent of our students who sang and played instruments, bringing energy and life to both of the performances. Now we look forward to our epic rock concert later this year. Our students also performed the successful musical Grease at our high school for our students and all middle schoolers, mesmerizing the audience with energetic dancing and powerful acting, creating an unforgettable experience for all. During the holiday season, the acapella choir spread festive cheer by visiting City Hall, performing at the Christmas tree lighting in Union Square Plaza, and singing at local nursing homes along with other performances around the school. We also organized the Operation Christmas Child, where students could donate gifts and pack them into boxes. In total, we collected one hundred ninety-seven boxes, which were sent to children across the globe, it was incredibly rewarding to see the difference we made in the lives of others. For Black History Month, we are sharing a daily Black History Month quote during the morning announcements. We also organize a lot of fun activities for Valentine's Day, like wearing a red or pink shirt, sending the soda crush to a crush, and watching a movie, helping raise funds for future events. Additionally, the student government is hosting Jeff's Tricky Tray, where we collect donations to create different themed baskets, such as food, spa, and game baskets, where people can buy raffle tickets and enter them for a chance to win a basket of their choice. In the meantime, students in our, at our high school are working hard for our spring musical, Sister Act, which will take place in March. The cast and crew have been rehearsing tirelessly, and we promise an amazing performance that we cannot wait to share with everyone. Other Elizabeth Public Schools high schools have also been occupied with various activities. Johnny Dwyer Technology Academy organizes an after-school sit-and-pay every other week for their students, which brings a lot of entertainment and interaction. JBJ STEM Academy is celebrating Black History Month by visiting different elementary schools, hosting a Black History Month trivia, educating students on its history. They are also hosting a Kindness Month activity, where staff members give students kindness tickets when they see acts of kindness. The, this activity encourages students to engage in such important activities and promote a culture of respect within the school community. At Alexander Hamilton Preparatory Academy, they are having, they are having a Black History Month show, which brings the community together to, to celebrate and learn about Black History Month through performances. They are also organizing a one-word festival, where students can dress up to represent different countries, allowing them to explore the diverse cultures by trying their food and learning different traditions. Frank J. Sicarelle Academy had a dress like the eighties for the eighth year day of school, and they are also planning one hundredth day of school, where students will dress up as if they were one hundred years old to celebrate a milestone. Sicarelle Academy is also hosting a Black History Month show and sharing a Black History Month quote of the day in the morning announcements. J. Kristen Bolwich Finance Academy is arranging a dress like a famous African American for history, for Black History Month, to honor historical figures. Admiral William F. Holsey Health and Public Safety Academy is organizing a soccer game between juniors and seniors, encouraging friendly competition. Thomas A. Edison Career and Technology Academy is hosting an event where senior citizens will be given makeovers by students, a hardware, a hardwareming activity, as well as the Shop Right program, where students learn valuable life skills that will prepare them for the future. Thank you for allowing me to share these wonderful activities with you tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Billah, I just want, uh, the other student representatives to please stand, let's give them a big round of applause, all our students that are here. This is what school spirit is all about in leadership, supporting each other when you have your fellow classmates and fellow leaders participating, you come out and support them, so we really appreciate your involvement and your support in doing so, so we salute all of you, and especially our commissioner this month, Commissioner Billah, so thank you for that wonderful report, and thank you to the principal who's here with them as well, let's give her a big round of applause. Dr. Juanas, you can stand so the people can see you, thank you. Thank you for being here. All right, at this time, I want- Alright, at this time, I want to, we want to hear from our committee reports that we have here on our board. We have our special education committee, presented by our chairperson, Commissioner Eliana Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The special ed committee had the meeting on February sixth. The members to the committee attended. The committee reviewed the CPAD event for the remainder of the school year, including the Wednesday, March twenty-sixth. To that be a worship for pattern on guardianship, we are in the process to wait for Union County Surrogate to confirm. Also, Saturday, May seventeen, the community fair focusing on local government and nonprofit resource for families and children with disability. The CPAD policy was referred to the legal committee for review at the oncoming February thirteen meeting. The committee also reviewed the stracurricular program offering, including Saturday bowling clinic, Saturday soccer athletic clinic, Saturday recreation program at George Washington Academy, and Saturday Special Olympia. The twenty, the twenty-five autism awareness walk is set for Saturday, April fifth. It is raining being April twelve. Lastly, the committee also requests the district plan for the event for the New Jersey School Board Association Special Education Week that will take place on May twelve through May sixteen. And I see the report here, but also the committee met this afternoon again to follow with the discussion after the legal committee follow with the CPAD policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chavez. At this time, we'd like to hear from our negotiations committee, presented by Chairperson, Commissioner Jerry Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. President. The negotiations committee met on numerous occasions on January thirteenth, January twenty-second, January twenty-ninth, and February seventh. A quick synopsis of those meetings was our consultant, Dieter Lurch, briefed the committee on the analysis of percent and number of employees and salary dollars at different steps of the guides in comparison to other districts. At the following meeting, the committee discussed the EEA proposal regarding discounts to chapter seventy-eight and chapter forty-four contributions. A trend analysis of current health benefits enrollments and new hires and retirements was requested by the committee for the next meeting. At the January twenty-ninth meeting, our consultant, Dieter Lurch, briefed the committee on the effect of the proposed EEA salary percentage increases over the three-year contract. The committee reviewed and agreed to proposals from the EEA to be communicated at the January thirty-first meeting with the EEA. At the February seventh committee meeting, the committee discussed the outcome of the January thirty-first negotiations committee meeting with the EEA. The committee reviewed the trend analysis of current health benefits enrollments and new hires and retirements. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. At this time, we'd like to hear from our finance and accounting committee, Chairperson, Commissioner Jacobs again.
Thank you, Mr. President. On February twelfth, the finance and accounting meeting met and discussed the current status of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six budget preparation process for all instructional and non-instructional departments, and recently announced reductions in federal and state aid. The district was recently notified that its semi-Medicaid aid would be reduced from one point eight million to two hundred thousand, which represents a eighty percent deduction. The district anticipates receiving a state aid notification on February twenty-eighth and the preliminary submission of the budget to NJDOE is due no later than March nineteenth. I would also like to add to the board as well the fact that we have all been seeing what's going on in Washington as it relates to federal aid, specifically Title I, Title II, and Title III aid. And as we know, our districts do benefit greatly from those resources, and last year's budget included twelve million dollars. If we already experienced an eighty percent reduction in our Medicaid reimbursement, we could assume that it is possible, assume it is possible that we would also receive a significant reduction in those dollars as well, which would have to be made up in other areas of our budget. We're also anticipating, a memo I think was released on Tuesday by the New Jersey Department of Ed that no district would be, have, would suffer a greater than a three percent reduction in their state aid if they were, if they were to be cut. We are hoping that we, our district spared any cuts, but we cannot guarantee that. We have, we are anxiously awaiting the results that, the governor's budget address next week and the state aid numbers, which will release three days after. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. At this time, we'd like to hear from our properties committee, Chairperson, Vice President Maria Carvalho.
The committee was, the property committee met on February third. The committee was advised of significant construction projects initiated by the Benedictine Sisters at the convent across the school, across, from school four annex. A status of heating during the current frigid spell was provided by the Director of Plant and Property and Equipment. A status of the ESIP air conditioning projects in schools was discussed. An update on the vestibule safety projects was also discussed. The trade contract provisions for temporary mechanics was discussed. The committee requested that the student performance locations be provided to the Division of Plant and Property and Equipment. The committee required, inquired about the status of the vacancies in the department. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carvalho. Please give us our second report, which is the legal committee report by Vice President Carvalho again.
The legal committee met on February thirteenth. The committee received and revised, and reviewed and did the revisions to the CPAC policy and regulations provided by the special education committee. The status of the current litigation matter was provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. At this time, please add tab A to the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Mahone. At this time, we want to go over the claims list. Any questions or concerns from the board? Yes, Commissioner Moreno?
Yes, I, I don't have a question. I, I want to make a comment. At this time, I write a little bit notes. At this time, I want to take a moment to congratulate our school community for organizing such a fantastic event to celebrate Black History. Excellent. The dedication, the effort and passion that went to making this event a such success was incredible. As a board member, we enjoy, we celebrate, and was great to see our community came together to celebrate. I feel like it's important at this moment, in the time we're living right now. That's mean, I really, really appreciate what's an excellent how our community leaders, also principal and teacher, educate our student about the contribution of the Black community make to this wonderful country. Thank you, and as a board member, we really, really enjoy a lot. Every year is better and better, and I want to say thank you to President Stanero and Charlene and Jerry. We really enjoy a lot, the Black History Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Kennedy, please add tab nine to the agenda. And at this time, thank you for your comments, Commissioner Moreno. We have tab ten, number of resolutions, which are gonna cover youth art, youth art month, National Nutrition Month, Women's History Month, National School Breakfast Week, National School Social Workers Week, Read Across America, St. Joseph's Day, St. Patrick's Day. We have a resolution for appointing BSN LLC and George Hinder Incorporated, the sportsmen, to provide the athletic equipment and supplies for our spring sports. We have another resolution to renew the contract, what we've been discussing, the McClossey Mechanical Contractors for servicing and maintenance of refrigerators and freezers. We have another co, a resolution to renew contracts with New Engine, Energy LLC to provide energy management, tracking, procurement, and demand response services. We have a resolution for payment of unused sick days, payment of unused vacation days. We have a resolution to transfer the maintenance of reserve funds for use of twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five school maintenance projects associated with the school maintenance plan. We have a resolution for a transfer, transfer of capital reserve funds, transferring approximately three point three million fifty-eight thousand seven hundred sixty-six for the use of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget associated with the long-range facilities plan. We have the resolution for the expansion of the fieldhouse at Williams Field for the district's athletic teams. Huge accomplishment. We have the resolution for residency investigations, results, and actions. And that is all. Any questions or concerns from our commissioners? Seeing none, hearing none, please add tab ten to tab ten P to the agenda. And at this time, we would like to take public session into private session. I would like to request a motion to go into private session to consider matters exempt under the Open Public Meetings Act specifically for discussion of legal matters, specifically workman's compensation, DM, LL, settlement, EK, tenure charges, LS, DT, and approval of ERI, personal matters, personal report to be, appointment, and C, non-renewal, LS. The board will reconvene in public and may take formal action. May I have a motion and a second?
I make a motion to go into private. I second that motion.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Mr. Randy, Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Patholus. Carvalho.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Moreno Ortega.
Yes.
Goncalves Pistana. Neron.
Yes. Thank you to all the members in public who attended the first portion of our meeting. We will reconvene after private session, but before we do that, I'd like to have our student representative join us up front for a picture. She can be joined by her other student representatives that are here to support her, so come on up.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes, sure.
Mr. Candy, are there any additional items you'd like to add to the agenda this time?
Yes, we have a few items. The first item is Personnel Report, Tab 2B. We have an Appointment of Intern Varsity Wrestling Coach. We have a Resolution for Termination of Employment, LS. Approval of a Job Description for the Director of the Food Service Division. And also an Authorization to Submit an Application for New Classroom.
Okay, Mr. Candy Connolly, add those items to the agenda. And at this time Superintendent will present an HIB report. Again, to go on the record Superintendent will present our HIB report. Sorry for the delay.
My apologies. Pursuant to Board Policy 5131.1, Harassment, Intimidation and Bullying, New Jersey Statute 18A, Colon 37, the results of each investigation shall be reported to the Board of Education no later than the date of the next board meeting following completion of the investigation and include any services provided, training established, discipline imposed, or other action taken or recommended by the Chief School Administrator. Since our last Board of Education meeting on January fourteenth through February twelfth, our school counselors, school-based social workers have completed fifty-two HIB investigations. Of these investigations, twenty-one cases were founded for HIB. There were thirty-one males, twenty-nine females, fifty-three regular education students, seven special education students that were the alleged victims. There were forty-six males, twenty females, fifty-nine regular education students, six special education students, and one non-student that were the alleged offenders. Of the twenty-one cases founded for HIB, five cases were founded based on race, national origin. Three cases were founded on color, based on color. Three cases were founded based on sexual orientation. One case was founded based on gender. Two cases were founded based on mental, physical, or sensory disability. And fifteen cases were founded based on other identifying characteristics. Of the services provided and actions taken for these investigations, there were eighteen skill development lessons and trainings, forty-three counseling sessions, four behavioral interventions, twelve referrals